Go ahead and call this meeting to order, the April 16th, 2018. The first item of business is adoption of a tax rate for 2018. Is there any motions?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to add a half a penny to our current tax rate.
So the motion?
For real estate property taxes.
Eighty-nine point five. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I don't think we're going to need that extra half penny because I don't think we're moving in the right direction, jumping on, putting SROs in all the schools when we don't really know where the school board stands on that. We know that they came out in support of it after the sheriff had recommended it, but I think it's too late and too soon to commit that amount of money to something we don't even know if it's what we or they want.
Well, a possibility might be to commit the money, as we talked about $35,000 being committed to a contingency. Possibility might be to put it in a contingency and then see where we go from there because the security issue isn't going to go away and it would be there, just like we have two cents put away for schools. Same sort of feeling because I do think it is our responsibility as public officials to provide public safety for our citizens and I think our youngest citizens deserve that same kind of oversight there at the future and they can't speak for themselves. And so, you know, I thought about this today and if you allow me a couple of minutes, I reflected on it today and I thought, you know, why am I being so passionate about this and why am I, you know, maybe I'm not expressing myself the right way. So I thought back to April 16th and I thought back to Harding Avenue and I thought back to that day and on that particular day, you know, Harding Avenue is an open school, we have windows all around it and if you went outside the front door, you could hear the alert was going, "Stay away from windows, stay away from windows." We didn't have a particular plan at that time in our school and so we decided that we would take the children in the multipurpose room and tell them they were having a surprise spring picnic and they ate their lunch on the floor. We brought in cafeteria people and we had a picnic. We never told the children what were happening because we didn't know what was going to happen. We backed tables up against the windows to the multipurpose room that so the outside was blocked and we weren't assured that we were safe until later in the day. What was the goal that day? The goal was to protect those children at any cost, which included when they needed to go to the bathroom, walking them from the multipurpose room to the bathroom and putting our bodies between the window and the children. Today, with the snow in the air, brought the whole thing back to me and I thought, "Okay, Mary, that's why you feel passionate about this. What was going, what was going on through our minds that day?" Through every teacher, every employee in that school was to protect those children. We protected the children and at the end, when the parents came to pick them up, they were safe. Now, would an SRO officer have made a difference in that situation? Would it have made a difference with some of the school security things that happened after that fact and some that have been suggested by Dr. Meyer for the future? In my opinion, yes. Anything that gives an extra layer of protection, maybe it can't prevent something, but it sure can add some benefit to something. And so, I thought if maybe I explained to you why I felt this way, maybe you would understand and all of you, I know, I know in your hearts love children. I know that and I know that you want to protect children and I know that we might disagree about the way we go about it, but I wanted you to understand where I'm coming from when I say that I wanted to provide a resource, a half a penny, to protect a most valuable resource and that's the human resource of our children and elementary children in particular because we have the school resource officers at Millland High School level. So I just hope that that provides a measure of understanding for you and where we go from here, if this doesn't work, if this doesn't pass, I'm still going to be talking about this issue and I don't want any money taken from the school board budget. They need to pay for the other things that, that we're passionate about in our education of our children. So that's just my comment for the night and I just wanted you to understand. Thank you.
I would like to-
Sure.
-add to that. I love children. I have three of my own. I have six grandchildren and extended families. So I do love children, but the SROs may not be the solution that we really want and that the school board really wants and that's why we need to look into it instead of jumping into it and starting something that we might, we might have to change or we might regret we started in the first place. And I do understand where you're coming from. You live in fear. Many people do. I do not. I would rather plan and execute a good plan that's going to work or that we think will work than to jump into something and have a knee-jerk reaction and that's where I'm from.
And I, and I guess what I was saying, if you were looking at a compromise for this whole thing, I would, I would say that half a penny could be put as a fund or in the general contingencies, whatever, as you go and meet with the school board people about the safety and, and measures that might be taken in the future. I mean, to me, that would, that would sort of, would be there, would be a resource for that.
Sarah?
It would be a resource that could be used as soon as a solution was determined as opposed to coming back to the board and figuring out where to pay for whatever that solution is. I'd like to read from an email I sent to all of you. Throughout this whole budget process, I know that a number of people have included and replied all as far as when they received emails from constituents. Between all of the emails that have crossed my inbox as well as all of the public address, there are 99 people that spoke. Of the 99, 81 percent said yes, that they wanted to raise taxes a half a cent and yes, they wanted to give the teachers raises and yes, they supported the SROs. Those included one preschool teacher, three first grade teachers, one second grade teacher, three third grade teachers, five fifth grade teachers, one seventh grade teacher, one eighth grade teacher, one art teacher, three counselors, two custodians, one gifted resource teacher, two math teachers, two music teachers, one nurse, one principal, three PTA, PTO presidents, four reading recovery specialists, one retired teacher, three special ed teachers, one student and five miscellaneous educators. That represents approximately 5% of all teachers in our school system. To me, that's a large percentage. One out of 20 teachers came and spoke to us and said, "We need the one and a half cent raise and we encourage you to raise taxes in order to make that happen and we want to be safe." Fifty-one of the people, I'm sorry, 52 of the people, 52 of the 99 people that responded were from the education area. The other 37 people, only nine didn't want tax, didn't want a tax increase. That means of all of us non-educated, non, all of the people who aren't affiliated with the school division, there were 37 people that showed up and talked to us one way or another, only nine of whom said they didn't want to raise the taxes. That equates to 75% of non-educated, non-education related people. 75% of them said, "We encourage you to raise taxes so that you could give the teachers raises, make sure SROs were in schools and we encourage you to raise the taxes to do For those people that talked to us, the 99 people that did talk to us, for districts A, C, E and F, 100% of the people said they were supportive of the tax raise, teachers to get their one and a half cent raise and SRO officers. For districts B, there were 83% positive, district D, 78% positive and district G, only 50%, but there were only two people that, that came from district D. Again, the overall support was 81%. If that's not a compelling response, I don't know what is. So I would beg you to approve the half cent tax, real estate tax increase.
Supervisor Kim?
I appreciate all them figures. But if you look in here, and there was four people from my district. One of them was a retired teacher, if that's the same one you're talking about. You had two, excuse me, you had four people. The rest of them that I got contacted from don't want no tax increase. And I do appreciate all these figures, I really do. But I think the way we have this budget figured out now, the teachers will get a raise, they will get their step-ups. And I'm like, "Steve, I think we need to sit back and," I'm all about safety and security, "but we need to figure out what we need to do first, how it needs to work." I mean, as Supervisor Biggs talked about, she wants to do something here at this government center. We need to do that. But also, you need to understand, when tragedy happens, people come out of the woodwork just to sell something and it makes people feel safe. I mean, it happens all the time. I'm not saying I don't want SOR officers in the schools. I'm not saying that whatsoever. Sheriff's Department does a wonderful job. I like to pat them on the back for just a few minutes if you indulge me. During the big snowstorm, I seen investigators, road deputies off duty coming out to help on their own time. I've seen them sit out there for hours trying to help citizens of Montgomery County. I know they didn't only do it in my district, they done it all across Montgomery County. We have a heck of a sheriff's department. I respect every one of them, but I think we need to sit back and figure out what we need to do first. Thank you.
Supervisor Demoss?
I agree with Supervisors Biggs and Bone about the necessity of, of a minimum setting the money aside in a contingency fund, not necessarily immediately implementing SROs in all of our elementary schools, but I think this whole board has agreed that the issue at least merits study and I think you made a great point, Sarah, when you said that we can implement something immediately if the money is sitting there, ready, and I think that there's a lot of value in that. And I think this is a especially poignant conversation to be having today and I think back, my senior year of high school, as we were preparing for graduation, the shooting at Columbine took place and I think I'm fortunate that I didn't go to school in the era that my children are going to school in now where something that to, to me, when I was in high school was just shocking and horrifying. Of course, that wasn't the first school shooting, but it was extremely well-publicized and well-known about and, you know, a lot of children died that day. That's become such a commonplace occurrence now that sometimes they don't make the news unless the casualty count is especially high. Here in the New River Valley, we've had two school shootings and we're discussing school shootings here on the anniversary of the Virginia Tech shooting and I just, I, I think that, that we're really missing an opportunity to do something if we don't at least set some money aside so we can address school safety and security with the school board and after the results of some studying and planning are done for it. I, I certainly agree that we all had a knee-jerk reaction to the Parkland shooting and I think the sheriff's plan is a wonderful one. I think that it would be great if we can put, if we could put a school resource officer in every elementary school, but then I also think, you know, yeah, we do need to study this a little bit more and this would give us the opportunity to study and to implement immediately measures in our schools to make our kids safer, whether it be school resource officers, additional security measures, something we haven't even talked about or thought about yet, whatever it is, it would be really nice if we had the money set aside and could immediately implement a plan. That being said, I think that it's very important that we address the raises for teachers. I think it's very important that we get all of our teachers onto the correct steps. So I'm, I'm very pleased that, I think regardless of what happens tonight, that those issues will be addressed, but I think we could do more and in my heart, I feel like we should be doing more.
I would like to say something. I was one of those officers that was there that morning. I was probably on scene within, I'll say two minutes, but it probably a little sooner than that. Time just evaporated that day and you can see the outcome that happened there. I can't speak for the sheriff's department. I, I feel in my heart that, and I'm gonna be like Todd, I care about those kids as much as the next person. I'd question whether one trained officer in a school, he would have to be in exactly the right place at exactly the right time to prevent a lot of casualties, I think. I mean, those schools are pretty big and if he's on one end and it starts on the other end, it's, it's, it's going to be what it's going to be and he's going to be there, but it pains me. So I, I like the idea of going into a situation where you do a study and you figure out what would be the best, what steps to take to spend that money. Your numbers impress me. The only thing is, a lot of the people that said, "Don't raise my taxes," do not show up in this room and I think there's like 2,300 teachers, employees of the school? Is that somewhere close? I think that's the number I heard. And there's what, population of what, 95,000 in this county? So that's a really small amount of the total population. That's all I'm gonna say.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
I called Katie today and I forget the exact number, but I did the calculation. There's like 860 teachers or teacher, people who are on the teacher step, if I'm saying that correctly. So, so 51 or 52 into that is 81%. I'm sorry, is 5%. So 1 in 20 people that could have shown up did, which is pretty impressive when you think about statistics. And then the other thing I wanted to say is, I believe that having an SRO officer in the school, if an incident were to happen, even if they are on the other side of the building, will minimize the casualties compared to if there were no SRO officer in the building. And I think our children deserve that kind of protection.
Well, we have almost 10,000 children in the system.
Yeah. A few things, I guess, at this point in time, I'd like to say a few things. This budget process, Steve and three of my other colleagues voted to have this discussion about whether we should increase taxes. At the behest of some folks that talked about democracy, it was important. Some of those same folks are in this room, but when someone got up and stated something different from their narrative, they were the first to try to shout him down. It was embarrassing. So I want to talk a little bit about Mr. Gill. He got up and he said, and I'm sitting up here and I start seeing the head shake when he said there was 9,700 students. You may remember that I have been sending out over and over again how many per capita, how we do spending and that we're tops in our region and that we should be proud of being tops in our region. 9,700 was the number that was given to us by the school board. So then, Mr. Gill, I started looking at and I thought, he, what really set them off was when they said there's no, that the teachers could have insurance for free without that possibility. That's when they started yelling, "No, no." And so then I look on MPS and lo and behold, there's a high deductible policy, just like he talked about muteling, that employees don't have to pay anything for. It's a high deductible, but it's there. So the other thing that Mr. Gill talked about was this upcoming reassessment. We are fortunate to live in an area that is going to be, and it is a growing area and it's one of the fastest growing areas in our region and we are going to see next year a tax increase. Our base is going to go up and in some areas, it's going to go up dramatically. My family has been involved with the real estate business my entire life. They have purchased properties at, in, during foreclosure sales and the like. We can't find a house to buy in Blacksburg for less than $200,000. It doesn't exist just about. So I'm expecting that market and I start looking at in Darrell's district, those houses that start in the low 400s, okay? That's, that's how they market the starting price of those. So I believe we're going to have a good reassessment and that we'll be able to do that. But also, when I look at those emails, I think of the misinformation that is out there that somebody has provided. I think about last year, we started hearing if we had a two-cent tax increase, we're going to be able to build a school soon. And then we started talking about, wait a minute, it's $110 million for a new school. That two-cent tax increase, we had to have it, but when then we started talking about, wait a minute, what if we remodel Christiansburg High School? What if we start and then spend some money on a new elementary school we could actually build too, but two cents was not going to build a $110 million high school? So those are, when I look at now, we are continually seeing, please have this two-cent tax increase so we can have teacher raises. Somebody has put that information out there and if I get up and say something dramatic, that rumor will spread and that false information will spread. And so when you look at that, we don't have to have a tax increase to make sure that those teachers get a one and a half cent raise. And I'm going through their checklist. We don't have to have a tax increase to be able to make sure that 53% of the teachers get step increases. We don't have to have a tax increase to make sure their insurance premiums are the same. So when we look at their priorities, we are meeting the school board's priorities and we all know that there, that there's at least going to be $16,000 more going towards the schools, but could be as much as $300,000 more going to, towards the schools when the state budget is passed. So I look at that and then I also hear what we're talking about, the resource officers. And I'm thinking, to me, I'm a lot like Steve. I refuse to live in fear. After the 9/11 attacks, tourism just plummeted in DC. So I decided to take my wife and my children and we went up to DC and if you remember, there was powder being sent to the congressman and I said, "I'm not going to allow fear to dictate my life." We also went to New York City that year. I wasn't going to allow fear. I wasn't going to let those people tell me how I'm going to live because that's their goal. So when I go back to Mr. Gill and I think about people like him, the school board doesn't want us to pull $97,000 out of their budget, which potentially with the $85,000 could provide three resource officers. Hank would have to come up with a way to reassign a fourth one. We could do that without a tax increase and Hank would have to be able to provide four vehicles for them to be able to drive in and we would have to approve that. So that could give us the four resource officers in the county schools, which he came to us and which he is responsible primarily for law enforcement. When you look at that, you say, "Okay, 97,000 and I'm rounding off, you've got $109 million budget with the schools." You take that and you divide 97,000 by 109 million, you get .00088. Somebody who's on a fixed income that's getting a social security check of about $1,000 a month, when you start talking about this tax increase on an average is about .008, just like the schools. And they're yelling because they don't want that portion taken out of their budget and we have citizens who are saying, "Hey, don't take that portion out of my budget, my household budget." Now, I'm happy to talk about the school resource officer issue, but I don't want to do it out of fear. There's so many decisions in this world that have been bad, whether it's when Irish immigrants came to this country and they said, "No, we don't want those Irish folks here," or whether it was during the Japanese internment camps where we took, Japanese citizens took their businesses away and put them in, in concentration camps, whether it be the Red Scare or the fears that are generated today, I don't want to allow that to dictate how the decisions I'm going to make. So that, that's my feelings and that may have generated some additional questions that I'm happy to recognize. Supervisor Demoss?
I think, and trying to get my thoughts together very quickly on this, the, the, having the four SROs instead of eight as requested, and I'm speaking as a representative of my district on this and my district for those that are here is almost, with very few exceptions, is almost all town of Blacksburg residents, so people that are paying town taxes and county taxes, voting in town elections and county elections. And, and part of my problem with discussing or, or, you know, having a solution that involves only four school resource officers is that the residents of my district will be paying, they're already paying for school resource officers in the middle and high schools through their town taxes for in-town schools. They're paying for school resource officers for the county middle and high schools through their county taxes and it would be adding another tax to town of Blacksburg and town of Christiansburg residents, which they would be receiving absolutely no benefit from. And so on that, I have a bit of an issue of fairness and, and knowing as we all do that the, that almost two-thirds of all real estate taxes for Montgomery County is paid by residents of the town of Blacksburg and the town of Christiansburg, so you'd have two-thirds of all taxes benefiting a third of the population. There's just an issue of fairness there. I support eight, I would love to see eight school resource officers, but I do have just a fairness objection to a plan that would put four school resource officers in the schools because the people that would be paying for it would not actually be receiving a benefit from it.
And to add to that Supervisor Demoss's statement, it- it also is not fair to take one group of students and place a value on them that you're not placing on another group of students if we truly believe in treating everyone equally. And I would echo what you said also, April, about the way everything is paid for, because that's pretty much the same in my district. I have some people that live outside of the town boundaries, but most live inside.
I'd like to talk about a couple of things that you brought up, Chair Tuck. I agree. I was embarrassed for Mr. Gill. I wish that we all could have kept quiet and honored the time that he wanted to have in front of everyone. I emailed Mr. Gill back, because he followed up with an email. And a lot of the numbers that he brought up in his email related back to 2013. But you have to actually go back to 2008 and before to see where the state took away $10 million. And of course, the teachers and the administration had to ask us to fill in the gaps to the best of their ability. So, and the other thing you referred to, Chair Tuck. Yes, we are, and we do pay TOPs in our region. The numbers are there on your chart. Part of the reason why is because we have low enrollment in the Shawsville and Auburn area. Don't get me wrong. I'm really glad we have schools in the Auburn and the Shawsville area for those students. I grew up in a very rural area, and was very, very, it was very beneficial for me to have a school close by where I lived. With regards to health benefits, you bet. Not only do the schools have a high deductible plan, but we do too on the count of government. I bet, I could be wrong, but I bet that maybe 1/3 of the people, I could be wrong. Not everybody selects the high deductible healthcare plan, especially if you've got young kids. So, they're paying out of pocket. And we all know, over the last couple of years, when they've been given raises, a lot, if not more, has been taken out because of the health premium that they've had to cover. So, we're going to just take that off the table, because it's, whether you take it off the table or not, that's the truth. With regards to the reassessment, I asked Craig many moons ago, how much would a reassessment provide? And this is dated, very dated. He said about $900,000 in extra taxes, okay? But Chair Tuck, I thought that you think that there would be more. And so that's why I asked you, and you thought, $2 to $4 million.
I think I said $2 to $0.3 is what I'm anticipating, the equivalent of $2 to $0.3, so that would be what I believe, and I may be wrong.
So that's worth about $2 million, $2.1 million.
$1.5 to $2 million.
Right. So if we think about this, and I asked after the last meeting, our last Board of Supervisors meeting last week, if inflation is included in anybody's budget, and the answer is no. Okay? So if we take that reassessment of even $2 million and divide it by four years, that's a half a million dollars a year on a budget that's $189 million. It's basically a half, a half a percentage point increase, when we know that inflation is at least 1.7%, but really, it's at least 2%. So we're falling behind, even with this reassessment. Over four years, if we were keeping up with inflation, and inflation was 2%, that'd be 8% increase in four years. You're only talking about 0.3, 0.3 cents or 3 percentage points. We're 5 percentage points behind still with that reassessment.
Right, but you're not factoring in the year annual growth as well.
Which is $1.5 million or so?
It was $1.9 million this year, so that's right at 2%. No, no, that'd be, it's right at 1% on top of what you're talking about.
So, so basically, it's 1.5% per year. And regular inflation is at least 2% a year.
Depending on the year.
Mm-hmm. So, we're falling behind.
But that's also considering just the county side of things? Then if you hopefully factor in that we will, now, this year, the county only got, I think, $16,000, or projected to get $16,000 in additional money from the state. But you would like to think that we would get more than $16,000 in the future. But you never know.
But also, we're short teachers. And part of, part of the reason why they got the 200-plus million, $200-plus thousand is because they needed more teachers for the additional students that they're getting. You referred to the school board priorities. They told us that they wanted $7 million. But they wanted to be realistic and only asked for 2.3, which was very bold of them, considering we only had $1.9 million between the two of us, right? Well, we're making it happen. But you know what? Parkland didn't happen until after the budget process started. And yes, it makes sense to address needs that we may have been putting on the back burner.
And I'm happy to look at other security measures, but there was an SRO at Parkland. And since the shooting in Maryland took place, it's my understanding, the ballistic results came back as the gentleman shot himself in the head. And while he was engaged by the SRO officer, he was not shot by the SRO officer.
I still stand behind my statement of, if an SRO officer is in the building, less damage will be done than if an SRO officer is not in the building.
And if that's the case, if it's about children's safety, let's pull the 97,000, they can take it out of their maintenance money. If that's our priority, if that's their priority, we've got the $85,000, we can get them to where they need to be.
That's not the point.
Well, no, that is the point, isn't it?
Nope, it's not the point.
About providing the safety, isn't that the point?
We have the ability to raise a half a cent in real estate taxes so that the schools do not have a reduction in what they are trying to meet right now. In fact, I don't believe that, you know, early on, Supervisor King and Supervisor Fidzikowski mentioned that there was probably some fluff in the school board budget, okay? I haven't found...
Where'd that come from? No, I'm happy to say...
Fidzikowski.
I'll tell you...
You said, one of you guys did.
Fluff?
Fluff, or you could probably find some money, or the 97,000 in it. But no one has been forthcoming to say, oh, yeah, they're overspending here or overspending there.
Sarah, just one example, and I did share it, but I wouldn't go make it this public. But I've got flyers, and I was fortunate enough, one time I got three flyers to one mailing address recently. These are the very nice printed flyers. I think they ran about $5,700. Somebody can correct me if I'm wrong. I also got 12 to one additional address.
What flyers are you, are you talking about the...
The school newsletters.
School newsletters. Okay, I got 12 at one address. I have 10 of them still left. I've got them in my briefcase. After the meeting, we can go to my office, and I'll show them to you. All at the same address. So, there is always some fluff. Now, did I believe that they tried to use a company, and that was a company's decision, and it happened? Sure I did. But everybody, including us, has got some edges that we can, and that's how, in many ways, we look at it and we say, okay, this money didn't get spent, but there's an example of $5,700.
So $5,700 on a quarterly basis?
Well, you just said, is there an example of fluff? And I haven't heard, so I was just providing that example.
But if they have to take out $97,000 out of their budget, that's a lot of money.
That, out of their line, I'm...
That's 1% of their budget.
No, it's .08% of their budget. 100, roughly $109 million is their budget. If you take $97,000, that's .08%.
No, it's not.
All right, let's do the math, okay? Take 109...
It's .8, it's not .08.
No, it's .08. Go ahead, and I'll, we'll go ahead and do the math. Take 109 million, or 97,000 divided by 109 million, and it'll come up .0, zeros, and then you need to make it percentage, so you've got to move it up 2 percentage points. But it's .088%. Now, you may have to take, if you've got some cap...
Give me a second here, and I'll get it. So a 10th of, 10th of a percent?
1/100 of a percent. 8 1/100s.
8 1/100s, or 1/10th of a percent. There's an easy solution, the half-cent real estate tax increase. Bear with me. The other thing with regards to the state budget, we won't know for several weeks, probably, what we'll be getting for the state budget. And lastly, you referred to living in fear, or refusing to live in fear. You, as well as I know a lot of people like myself, refuse to live in fear. And we don't want fear to dictate. I don't believe the Parkland or the Maryland incidents are a knee-jerk reaction to fear. I think it's a knee-jerk reaction to a solution, or a possible solution. And I still believe that an SRO officer in the school is better than not having an SRO officer. And I believe a half-cent real estate tax increase will allow that to happen, and will also have money available for the other solutions that they come up with. Thank you.
I think we should vote.
Okay.
One thing, I want to correct them, I don't say fluff.
Sorry about that.
Now, also, I probably did say, there's always somewhere to cut a budget everywhere. I mean, you do it at home, I do it at home, there's always somewhere to cut. Do we want to? No, man, we don't. But sometime you have to, that's life. And I also want to emphasize, we have $1.9 million left over. The school's got $1.5 million of it, is that correct?
$1.9 million of new...
And the county kept 400. I mean, I'm not being mean when I say this, but at the best, if I picked it, we would have split it, because county's got needs too.
There was a, Mr. Demoss was saying it's time to vote. Is there any other discussion at this point in time?
She's awful pushy, ain't she?
I think she's, I think this has been a good debate. It's been a debate of ideas, that's always a good thing. Madam Clerk, there being no one else, Madam Clerk, would you please call...
We want to reinstate what we're voting on?
Oh, we are voting on, at this point in time, a vote in, yea vote would be in favor of 89.5%, 89.9%.
And a half.
89.5 cents on, per 100 on the tax rate, but leaving the personal property and the other taxes at the same level is what I heard.
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll, I believe on Ms. Biggs's motion.
Mr. Shepherd?
No.
Ms. Benn?
Yes.
Ms. Biggs?
Yes.
Mr. Demoss?
Yes.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
No.
Mr. King?
No.
Chair Tuck?
No.
3 ayes, 4 noes.
I'd like to make a motion for 89 cents on the 100.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demoss?
No.
Ms. Biggs?
Well, I'm having an issue here. My issue is, I want the teachers to have their salary increase and their steps, and the 89 cents would provide that, provided that the budget that we had advertised goes through as is. And at this point, I'm not assured of that. So, I don't know. I mean, I guess we vote on the budget next, and I don't want to be caught off-guard with that whole situation of all of a sudden it being turned and money being taken out, so. I'll tell you what I'm going to do. I'm going to vote yes, and if there is some kind of plan to take money out of the budget, out of the school board budget, I will vote no on the budget.
So that's a yes vote?
Ms. Benn?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Chair Tuck?
Yes.
6 ayes, 1 no.
Next item is in regards, on our agenda, is adoption of the 2019 budget.
And Mr. Chair, since the board has adopted a previous resolution for 89 cents per 100, the amount that goes in your blank is $190 million. No, okay, I'll stop. $189, would you read it? Or you're standing to me? Okay. The amount is $189,356,564. And what that is, is the fiscal '19 advertised budget, which was at 90.5 cent, was $190,434,064. The 1.5 cents that did not get approved in the prior resolution deducts $1,162,500 from that $190 million. And then the additional county revenue of $85,000, as we went back through and reevaluated all the revenue lines, is added to that number. So the total budget at 89 cents per 100 is $189,356,564. Thank you, Mark.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
What is your motion, Mr. Fidzikowski?
My motion is that we adopt the budget that our esteemed colleague came up with, our administrator. At that rate, we would fund the biggest part of the schools' requests. I would also ask that the $85,000 that was found by finance be put in a contingency fund to be used for school security, including a possibility of a pilot program for SRO in elementary school. I also would hope that this board would take the end-of-the-year money that we have left over and take care of the items that were eliminated from the school budget. This way, we're not taking anything out of the school budget.
There's a motion, and I believe I heard Supervisor Shepherd, is there discussion about this budget?
Okay, so that leaves, your motion leaves everything as presented, except for the $85,000 to be added to contingencies. The schools would receive the full amount that we talked about.
Correct.
Yes, the $1.5 million that was proposed, and then, but the additional $238 would go to them as well.
Correct.
With the expectation that the additional $640,000...
$642, was it?
Or something.
$647, $642.
If we have that...
Would, would go to fulfill the school's budget.
Well, we'd have to bring it up for a vote, right?
Mm-hmm.
Well, we'd have to bring it up for a vote, Craig. Not, not expectation that it's going to happen.
I understand that there might-
That is our hope.
This is what the hope, but the actual vote tonight is just for-
The budget.
That, that, this budget. It's not for the allocation, because we don't know that we are going, we anticipate we're going to have that money, but we don't know we're going to have that money. So there's a motion and a second, and there's been some discussion. I don't want to cut anybody off. Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to just say a few words.
Sure.
I wrote this down so I don't get all upset and whatever. You know, we have 1.9 million dollars. We give the school one, one and a half million dollars, county kept 400. I think this is more than fair. Every time the county comes up with more money, we give the schools majority of it. As I stated before, Montgomery County taxpayers pays more into the schools than any surrounding areas. They pay 51%. I have the stats if somebody wants to see them. I want to tell the county administrator and the county staff how much I appreciate what you do for the county employees. I know there's been words going around, how can you take care of county employees when schools can't take care of theirs? I've heard some say, were your county administrators and your administrative staff put money aside? Yes, they did, last two years. They're not hiding money, they're putting it up to look after county employees. It's out and open, anybody can see it. Nobody's hiding anything. They're doing what's right. When, when it comes down to your employees, as I state, when I first got on the board, the school system started to go, and correct me if I'm wrong, Craig, if, they come in, one time, the support staff was going to cut their insurance and the pay that they give them for their insurance and everything. And I was one of the first ones stood up and said, you need to understand, your employees is most valuable thing you have, most valuable asset in your organization, is your employees. And I would encourage the school administration, the school board, after this is over with, you have a year, look in your budget. And I know it's hard, it's hard to cut anywhere. I do it at home, everybody does it. But try to work around like the county administrator and administrative staff does. They look after their employees, and that's what they was doing, putting this money aside. The county has plenty of needs. We have buildings we need to build, we have buildings we need to tear down, we have heating and air problems, internet problems. Sorry, sorry. But one thing is, they look after the employees. This does not mean the school employees is not up to the county employees, they are. I appreciate every school employee there is, every one of them. I talk to bus drivers, custodians, some of them's my good friends. But when it gets out there, I had a teacher come to me after our last meeting and said, well, some of the school people are saying you voted down everything. I didn't vote down everything. I've talked to several county staff members. I want to see the teachers get raises, I do. I want to see every person get a raise. I know I work every day, not bragging, not complaining, but I like to have a raise too. But one of my jobs is to look after county employees and school employees. I know I said this plenty of times, and I try to say it every meeting, how much I appreciate everybody, what they do for the citizens of Montgomery County, Sheriff's Department, we've got a dag on good sheriff's department, every one of them, men and women. But I, I just want people to understand, the county administration was not trying to hide anything. They're looking after their employees. That's what they're doing. And I appreciate each and every one of you doing that. And I would encourage, I would encourage the school side to do the same. Put back just a little bit, just a little bit. If it takes two years to step them up, hey, it takes two years. But make sure that you take care of your employees. I know you have needs and wants, but that is your main asset right there, is your employees. Without them, we don't have a school system. And I want to tell each and every one of you here, I appreciate you coming to all these meetings. You had other things you could have done, you could have enjoyed your family, but you come here passionate, and I do appreciate that. I honestly do. Thank you.
Any other comments before, yes, Supervisor Demont?
I just, really quickly, Angie and Mark, we've seen a lot of you lately. I want to let you both know how much I appreciate you coming so frequently to visit us, and all of the hard work that you've done on the budget, and to the rest of our staff, and to Craig. I think, and I find it very interesting, that after all of this debate, many hours spent in this room together, that it looks like we're probably going to move forward with the budget that you proposed originally, Craig. I know a lot of work went into that. I know that all of us wish that we could do more, and that we could turn on a faucet and money would come pouring out of it, and we could fill all of our needs. But thank you very much, all of you, for the hard work that you've put in this year to this budget cycle. I know it's been exhausting. It's been, been great spending so much time with you. And, and I really appreciate all the work that you have done.
Thank you.
Supervisor Biggs?
I'd also like to thank everyone for coming, not just for coming, but coming meeting after meeting, and all the emails received. I want to thank staff, Carol, Angie, Mark, Craig. I want to thank our board members for really trying to reach out and, and for the 4-3 vote to make it a public engagement process. I think that was something that was very productive this year. A lot of citizens came forward. There's one thing that keeps haunting me, and that was the theme that Craig had in his letter, funding for the future, looking at human resources and capital resources. So, following along with that theme, I would like to continually bring up the fact that I feel, and I think, and I want this to happen, and I don't know a, a good plan as to how to have it happen, but I think after we pass this budget, we need to get right on the next budget. And I think we need to involve everyone working together. I think that includes all the departments, constitutional offices, and of course, the school board. I think that with the reassessment coming in, and I think with our county growing, that we're sort of past the time of having a reactive budget, and we need to be proactive in our thinking and our planning. And planning doesn't just mean putting goals out there. Planning also means, how are you going to reach those goals? How are you going to fund those goals? And it's a serious conversation to have. So, if I bring this up again, you'll know that I'm going to keep on it, because I think it's important, because we're sitting on the edge here of this county. This county is going, it's already gone places, but it's going more places. And we've got to be ready. We've got to be ready for our new students, and we've got to be ready for our new citizens. So, planning and funding for the future, I think we need to keep that, that theme alive. Thank you.
Supervisor Bo?
I too would like to thank all of the county staff, especially Craig, Angie, Mark, Carol, Marty, Vicky, Josh.
Jennifer.
Jennifer. But also, I want to thank all of the school board and school administration, and all the teachers, and especially the Teachers Association. You really did a great job, and we appreciate it. And we hope that your raise and steps are getting you closer to where you should be. So, thank you for all of your efforts.
Anyone else? One, I, I like this idea. It puts money aside. If the schools ever decide that, hey, look, they want to shift some of those funds, they have that opportunity. If they find out that they get 300,000, and the House budget passes, and they say, hey, SROs are a real priority, it's, this money is set aside. But we also have the opportunity, as, as he described, a pilot program, to look at it. And you look throughout the state, and a lot of different localities are doing different things. There's some localities that the school boards are hiring security guards. There's some that are hiring a mix of security guards and SROs. There's some, Salem, and I would be remiss, Roanoke City, Mark, what happened? They found that like millions of dollars at the last minute. And I was just hoping that you were going to come in today and say, oh, by the way, we got an extra 600, 700,000. But no, thank you and Angie for spending time away from your family, all of our staff. But I think that this budget takes care of a lot of different things, and it's a good budget. And so if there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Marty, do we have to?
Yeah, she called you.
Okay.
She just did?
Pursuant to the State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act, I, Steve R. Fidzikowski, a member of the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors, make the following disclosure. One, as a member of the Board of Supervisors, I am expected to participate in the discussion of and to vote upon the adoption of the county budget, which includes the allocation of funds for the Montgomery County Public Schools. Two, my wife is currently employed by the Montgomery County Public School System, and her annual income shall exceed 5,000 annually. Three, I am a member of a large group, my wife being an employee of the Montgomery County Public Schools, the members of which are affected by the Montgomery County budget. I am able to participate in discussions and option, in the adoption of the budget, including the allocation of funds for the Montgomery County Public Schools fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. Therefore, I will participate in the discussion of and vote upon the adoption of the Montgomery County budget, including the allocation of funds for the Montgomery County Public Schools. A copy of this disclosure has been filed with the clerk of the Board of Supervisors. Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
What's the, no. I've got to read the same thing. Pursuant to the State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act, I, Daryl Shepherd, a member of the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors, make the following disclosure. As a member of the Board of Supervisors, I am expected to participate in the discussion and to vote upon the adoption of the county budget, which includes the allocation of funds for Montgomery County Public Schools. Two, my wife and I are currently employed in positions with the Montgomery County Public School System, and our annual income shall exceed 5,000 annually. I'm a member of a large group, I'm a member of a large group, employees of the Montgomery County Public Schools, the members of which are affected by the Montgomery County budget. I am able to participate in discussions and adoption of the budget, including the allocation of funds for the Montgomery County Public Schools fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. Therefore, I will participate in the discussion of and vote upon the adoption of the Montgomery County budget, including the allocation of funds for the Montgomery County Public Schools. A copy of this disclosure has been filed with the clerk of the Board of Supervisors. Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
There being no other business before this board, we adjourned until next moment.